I guess it's a...
Go see Sadie.
Yeah, because their hanging baskets are fifty bucks.
Right.
So it's six thirty, so welcome to the regular meeting of Starbuck City Council for October eleventh, and we'll start with the pledge of regents. Pledge of regents to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America's one nation, under God, and with its law, with liberty and justice for all. You can call a roll, please, Joan.
Mayor Swenson.
Here.
Counselor Gorder.
Here.
Counselor Kay. Counselor Bachele.
Yes.
Counsel Hanson.
Here.
Okay. First item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there any discussion on the agenda or claims for payment or the minutes of previous meetings? I guess there's a previous council meeting and the public hearing on the subdivision of property.
I think on tonight's agenda you were gonna add a couple of items.
Okay.
The Pope Douglas Solid Waste Lease is on the table for...
Okay.
And...
We're putting that under the mayor's discussion?
Yes.
Okay. There's one more addition. We're going to be discussing the sale of some real estate in a closed session, as well as a personnel discussion. So that'd be added under the closed meeting. That's all I have, so... Any other questions or discussions? Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Did you amend your motion, Steve?
Yes, I did.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is the old Fire Hall Brewing Company, and we have Jan Payne here with us this evening.
And Dean Jellin's also here.
And Dean Jellin also? Okay.
All right.
Hi, Jan.
Well, I haven't met any of you before, so nice to meet you. Thanks for taking time to hear our request. So my name's Jan Payne. I'm one of the owners in the venture here in town, Old Fire Hall Brewing Company. So you may, I'm sure by now you're probably aware that just to the south of the building, we don't have much property. And then there's a, city has an alley that isn't really used for, at least not to my appearance or anything, but utilities. So there's, from the north, or sorry, from the north, from the west, there's water and cable and gas. And the water comes to the building and the gas comes to the building. We are gonna move the gas line from where it comes into the building to the back of the building, so the west side of the building. And what we would like to do is to build or construct a patio seating area. And that, to do that, that would lie on city property, not our property. And so after review a couple of times now with your city zoning folks and then discussion with the city attorney, you would need to vacate that alley. And I think that's possible to do with a easement for utilities. So anyway, so we're here to ask if you'll vacate that so that we can proceed with that. Couple of things that does is it looks great as you enter from the south when you come into Starbuck. Gives us a place to sit outdoors, and it does help us facilitate a little nicer ADA compliant entry to the building, so.
So you did say you're open to easement for utilities?
Absolutely, absolutely.
That the city can have access to the property?
Yep. Yeah, and the nice thing about it is like, it really doesn't even come as far as our building, because if you look at how the water line comes down that grass, what was designed once upon a time in city planning, probably many years ago, an alley, it doesn't even, other than the water line coming to the building, it doesn't even get to us, especially now with the move of the gas line, which we're paying for. It's gonna cost like twenty-eight hundred dollars. But that will allow that to terminate actually at the building instead of at the street where it currently terminates. So, and it cleans up things for us as well. So, yes, we'd be very open to that easement, absolutely, because my understanding is he, from actually talking to Tom Jacobson, you can't just do a small portion of it. It's kind of an all or nothing thing. And it doesn't appear that you'll ever use that for transition as traffic and such, so.
I do know that back in the 2020 project, that we did use that alley to access the Starbuck ambulance housing there, that office.
Mm-hmm.
And they still reside there, so there's an issue with that. Where does your property butt up to all the other residents there?
It's about, it's about three feet south of the door, of the door. So I guess Ted could speak more to that. He's here tonight, too, so he knows probably about where that's at.
You gonna come too close to the border or to the property line?
Yep, because the property line that we currently have ends just outside the door. And you're, just outside the double doors that face south. And then you have this burr of an alley.
So that comes into the alley.
But it wouldn't, it wouldn't, well, I don't think it would cut you off unless you were, you know, unless you couldn't get through the parking lot. But I don't know how you would come now anymore from the west, because the trees have overgrown it. You'd have to cut all the trees out of it.
And then we cleared it and we were able to get vehicles and trucks.
Yeah, it must've grown back.
So, I'm sure it has.
Yeah.
You know, it's been a couple of years, but...
Yeah. I don't know what the, yeah, there doesn't appear that anybody's driven down it sometime. And I would say actually there were current residents along there probably maintaining this part of the lot.
Have you spoke to the current residents?
Yep, the guy right behind us says he has an issue with that situation.
So that's one of...
One of three. Yeah, so I don't know what it is. I haven't talked to all of them.
Yeah, okay. Because that would, I mean, if we're gonna go forward to vacate that, we have to make sure that all the residents that butt up to it are a in agreement and understand the process.
Right. I don't know how it works from your standpoint. I would assume there's probably some type of time for public comment, I would assume, on a vacate.
Yeah, we did...
You'd have to have a public hearing.
Yeah, I would assume you'd have a public hearing, so.
One question I had was, I know there's, you know, we have two RV parks and, or campgrounds and so forth.
Yep.
And more and more people are driving golf carts and so forth. And I was just concerned about how they legally would get to your establishment, because I think you'll have a lot of their business and so forth.
Well, the way I appear, at least when I've driven it, there's an alley right across the street that goes east and west, so they would, I think currently they have to come through Hobo anyway and down the city street, and they could come straight across 29. I don't know if that's legal to cross.
We don't have any, we don't have any approval to go north from Hobo Park, other than crossing over to...
Permission, right?
Yeah, from state and federal.
So, I don't know how they, I don't know how they access now, but that's, I know that's how they come.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's how they're getting up to the tavern anyway.
They'd have to, you know, cross from Hobo Park over on the first street by the Dairy Queen, and then they'd have to go over to Wallen Street.
Right.
And then north.
I don't know the streets, but there is an alley. So like, if you cross, straight across from our parking lot, there's an alley right there.
Yeah.
That I've driven down. And that's how I would've come in, but I don't know if it's legal to cross 29 or not, but...
Well, it's permissible to cross 29, but...
Yeah. It's straight across, like, straight across from the parking lot. So that's how I come, like, if I come in from this way. Other than that, I don't know how they would get there. Yeah, yep, they would, you would have to clear that alley, because you don't have a cutout at the curb either. There's no, you know, when you walk down there, normally you would do a cutout, so you could, there's no cutout in the curbing. So sometime, a long time ago, or they've just never made provision for traffic to come down it.
Does that go through, like, Peterson's? That rental? They took the whole alley through there? Because if they come up and go in that way, behind the...
Are you talking about Darren Peterson's?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, if we vacated, then adjacent property owners would have a right to have that property next to theirs, you know?
Yeah, I would assume so. I don't know how it works from there. I don't know how the legal term for it.
So having traffic come through that way, you know, wouldn't necessarily be allowed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was thinking if they took the whole alley, then they could do it.
Yeah.
Right.
What does that do for, like, your pump system and things? Because that's just on the north side of the building, isn't it?
Yeah, so the sewer goes out to the north. The water comes in from the north. Same thing also. I guess that gas line would come in. I think that's what...
We have a water main that feeds your building.
Okay. Does that come from the east?
Oh, no.
Okay.
Does that come from the east? You know, the whole fire hall, the building hall, danger zone. So that's the... That's, that's leading to your water main.
Yeah. That's where we're gonna hook to, I believe. Yep. That's how we're gonna get water back. Yep.
Right. Because it only goes out to there.
So this here...
So just parking here, then?
Well, yeah.
Going down the street?
Down the street.
That's the main entrance you're talking about then, too, right?
So they come right around this side of the highway, over here.
Right? Because this is the, this is main. This is you.
Yep, yep.
Comes out to the south?
Yeah, there's the main entrance right here.
Right where the garden was.
Okay.
Rob DeBois's, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's on the other side. Right? And then if you go from Wallen...
But that would cross, that would cross right across. They would have to come down, cross the road, go back down here, cross the road again, cross the road, get in there. So you didn't have to make a circle. You know what I'm saying?
Right. And come in that back way if they...
Well, the backside.
Yeah, the backside.
I don't know if they have permission or what, but I know a lot of, they, I know a lot of people use that back road, come along the fence there, the whole park, and they come all right over here and then they come across. Yeah. And we'd certainly love to have those folks come up, because they're certainly asking us about our progress a lot.
Yeah.
So...
Are there any other questions from the council?
Well, there was one other thing that I noticed. They were talking about that streets and alleys may only be vacated when it's in the interest of the public to do so. So interest of the public to do so, a private business is, is that something that qualifies?
Well, I think we want to see more, more business in town, you know? That'd be my opinion, that it's in the public interest to have more business in town and possibly more jobs available and...
So they're not looking at, like...
Increasing our tax base.
Like parks or anything like that when we vacate or, or housing projects or anything like that? It's just, if we deem it as that, it is? Okay. I didn't know if that was under our discretion or if there was.
Yeah.
All right.
Little question I have is if we were just supposed to go ahead and build your neighbor patio or...
Not if we move the gas line. Well, the water line would be, but we wouldn't be over at the water line, so... Yep. The gas line was a big move for us, and that's, we're really, I guess if this doesn't go forward, we maybe wouldn't bother, because it's obviously a cost or our business that we wouldn't necessarily need to incur, but...
See an issue then? Well, I guess I could kinda see an issue vacating the whole alley if there's water main, then we have an issue if we have water main on the private property, I guess.
What if we have easements? You would vacate with a, with a utility easement, is what Tom, is what the city attorney calls it.
And you have to...
And that's, yeah, that, from speaking with Tom, it isn't like, and I'm speaking with your attorney that represents the city, Tom Jacobson. I said the same thing. I said, well, it'd be nice with just this little section. And he goes, it's an all or nothing kind of a situation. I don't know if that's a state sort of law. I'm not an attorney. But they would do it with an easement, and that's not uncommon. There's a project where they did a whole housing development right up here in Parker's Prairie. Then Tom worked that project, and they vacated it and built right over the top with the utilities, so. But as far as the utilities that come, at least for where the patio's at, doesn't sit on anything if we move the gas line.
That example you used was for a housing project. So that, I guess, I just don't wanna run into any trouble later on down the road if they, if someone deems that that's not credible.
So how far into that alley, I guess, are you going? You're going up, like, mid-point of that?
Yeah, because you know, we're talking about renting that parking space from you, and it's...
Would it be twelve feet from the building?
Yeah, twelve feet from the building, which would...
Nine feet in the alley.
Yeah, about nine feet into the alley.
My only concern, and I don't wanna get away from the vacated, but the snow isn't gonna finish.
Oh, yeah. There's usually that big, huge mound right there by the side of that building.
That's something the weather, it looks something, city or whatever, but yeah, that's, because that's right when I find this.
Is the wind blowing in? Is that what it is?
No, from your parking lot. So the only place you have to pile it is right on the alley.
I got you. Yeah.
Goes to the south. So I take all my snow and I push it to the south, because we used to, before that, when the city owned that, they hauled it up.
Okay.
Since then, it just gets piled on the alley now. So I don't push towards the alley anymore. I push all to the south. And if we push all of that to the south, that would completely flood.
Flood, yeah.
Yeah, the baiting.
So our parking lot, you know, we hold in the whole building. We would either have to go north with the snow or haul it. Correct? That'll be an expense. That'll be a snow removal expense on us.
You know, it's gonna be something you're gonna wanna address, because otherwise your whole patio's gonna be a huge mountain.
Mountain of snow.
I don't want it to be this.
Yeah, right? Yeah.
And also that's something I keep in mind.
Yeah. Yeah, like I said, we won't be probably, but we'd wanna keep, well, we'd have to keep at least a little walkway there, but you could, you could, we could stack it there or do something with it, or we'll have to haul it away. Not having dealt with the snow issue there yet, we'll find out this winter. But those are things you, you know, if you gotta stack the snow, sometimes you gotta haul, hire somebody to haul it away. That's, you know? So...
Yeah, and that's, you know, that's one option, is that the council, the council could decide to, you know, send out letters to adjacent property owners and, you know, get their input and schedule a public hearing. And, you know, but basically, the council has to decide whether it's in the public interest or not to do it, you know?
Well, the planning and zoning looked at this this morning, so... I'll let Gary speak to that, yeah.
Yeah, no, they, I mean, I think they were in favor of, you know, recommending to the council to make a decision on it, and, you know...
No, I mean, this snow is my big concern. And then just the fact that we've got the ability, when there's people at the office, to have designated parking to get in and out. And that's mainly during the day, but it does run until six o'clock tonight, so we just have to keep it very out there.
Well, we're happy to hear that, because we're, we've come a long way. We've crossed a couple of major hurdles here just this past week with our TTB permit, so, yeah. So we're making progress, slowly but surely. And we, we get a lot of excitement from, you know, residents here in the community and on the lake and over in Glenwood, so we're constantly getting, hey, when are you gonna open? When are you gonna open? And so we're trying to create these little hurdles and, yeah. So I realize this is a serious matter, and we're just hoping that we can forge ahead, because it will look really nice for the business. And we do think it will help your public interest at some point, because again, bring jobs and, and a tax base to the community and another liquor license. And we're buying a lot of water from the city, because brewery brewing, it takes very intensive water, so we think we'll be adding to your economic base here in Starbuck, so, yeah. We can, we can deal with snow and some of these issues. It can be hauled. And we're willing to do what we have to do.
I think if the council were to decide to go ahead and issue letters or something, the bad part is that we have to give notice for public hearings.
Yep.
And go through the processes, sending out letters and so forth, so...
I just wouldn't want anything to come back and...
No, I would, I would have fully expected that.
Take care of it now. It doesn't come back to haunt anybody, right?
Absolutely. Well, yeah, I would expect a public hearing. I mean, that was just something I kinda was aware of, but in order to get to the public hearing, we had to start here.
Right.
Yep. And then, and, well, you folks would need to approve that, or you don't, and then, then there is no, if you don't approve it, then there's no public hearing at all, and it's done, so. So we're hoping we can advance to the next stage and hopefully have the public ring in on what they think would be best.
I'll make a motion that we hold a public hearing for the brewery and figure out what the outcome is on that.
I guess I'd ask, Joan, is, would we send out letters prior to a public hearing to adjacent property owners or just have a public hearing first, or?
No, we send out notices so people knew, you know, within the three hundred and fifty feet.
Three hundred and fifty feet or whatever. So you wanna include that in your motion, Steve?
Yep.
You have to do it.
To include anybody within three hundred and fifty feet of the vacated alley.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion to proceed with sending out letters and scheduling a public hearing. We have a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much.
This is one, one more step closer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move forward.
All right. Wonderful. Thanks.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is discussion of proposed purchase of city land. And Mr. Ruzink is here to talk with the council.
I don't right now. Hi, my name's Ted Ruzink. I own Minnewaska Marine. I'm coming to you again to look at the purchase of the property just west of my building. What I've got on that first page kinda gives you a layout of where the floodplain is. The light blue is the floodplain. If you could pick out the city works building and my shop on that. If you go to the second page or the back of the first page, that shows the property that is in question that I'd like to purchase. Basically, it runs a lot of in that slure area, its cattails and stuff. That runs a thirty-three point five nine acres. When we get up by the highway, we actually had that surveyed. It doesn't follow the river there. It just kinda went straight to the highway. If you look at that survey that we got back, I think that was in your packet. So it actually would be more in that thirty acre range. Like I say, most of that's cattails, so it's really not usable. On the third page there, the shaded part in red, that is pretty much the area that I would like to use. What I'm looking for is an area that I can put the docks and lifts for a marina. I wanna have something locked in, so I'm not renting different properties and asking different people to, to move it and rent it and all that. So that's kinda the reason for buying that property is to put that marina in there. It does take a substantial amount of land, just because of the lifts and the canopies on them. They get kinda spread out. With that, as you see, it's directly west of my place, so we do have that road that goes through back to there. Currently, Mo's rent that, and then I sub-rent from Mo's for storage right now for pontoons and stuff. It's working out really well. Some of the other papers I gave you there was just explaining my intentions and stuff. I did, with Mo's, I got ahold of them. I told them that I'd like to see him rent it for another five years. If he wants out of it, that's fine, but he's got some, he's got some input into that land. He's fertilized it and alfalfaed it, and it just works out good for both of us, because he bales that and gets it nice and short in the time that I wanna use it, and then I'm out of there before he's baling again. So, kind of good works for both of us, and I like him using it and baling it, because it keeps it good and short and keeps the rodents and everything away, so. Yes. Yep, they definitely wanna continue to, to farm it and bale it, so.
So, apart from that, beyond your proposal, do the city have access to that somehow?
I don't know if there's really anything out there that they can access. I mean, they can definitely access, they get across the property. I would gladly give them an easement to access through there. And that does say that in that first page of paperwork. I'd give them an access for easement anytime. You know, it's kind of the, the offside of the wastewater treatment plant, so that would be the only thing, is if they ever decide to do something with wastewater treatment, that they'd need to get to the other side of the creek. They definitely want access for it. Or if we have something, you know, if we gotta clean that creek out or something like that and get in there with a backhoe, that, none of that would be a problem. Any other questions?
That thirteen acres of unusable that you said was cattail and all that stuff?
Um, that's thirteen acres usable. It's actually twelve point...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Twelve point seven or something like that, so it's, I just rounded it to thirteen. It's, yeah, it's just shy of thirteen acres. And that's what's not in the floodplain. That's what I, on the GIS, that's what I highlighted in that small portion on that field.
So you're proposing the... So you're proposing the 33 acres?
Yes, yep, just, it just cleans that whole portion up a little bit better because where we surveyed it, we surveyed it down the high points of the crick just to give us a point. When we did that, we just kind of figured it's kind of unusable. We actually went out there in November when it was frozen and, and got the surveyor out there and he shot it from that way, so. It's kind of unusable, but we just want to clean that whole plot up, I would say, just south of the river. Do they, hey, the 13, the 12.75. They will get out a little bit beyond that, but it does get pretty soft quick. Yeah, that's pretty...
Has a 12.79 acres been surveyed or?
Uh, no, that was just done on GIS. And that was just GIS and then what I did is I followed the floodplain. So everything beyond that 12.75 is in the floodplain, so I just deemed that really, it's off ground, so you're not going to drive out there. So that's where I just GIS that 12.
So we'd have to have it surveyed then?
Well, no, we already surveyed. I'd want to buy the 35 acres that's been surveyed or 33 acres.
33.59 acres?
Yeah, and again, that's GIS. You guys have the survey, I think, in your packet and I'm not sure how many acres he says that is, but it's right in that 35 or something like that.
Yeah, the survey, I think, said 33.29.
Yeah, yeah, so that, that's kind of what I'm looking at purchasing is just what he surveyed there. And as you see there with the crick, it just follows high points of the crick because they won't accept following the crick. It's just not a surveyable line because if the crick moves, then the line moves, so that's...
Right, and flooding and everything's in there.
Yes, so that's why we survey it, just coming off the points of the crick.
Well, any other questions from the council at this point?
Okay.
We'll be discussing it in the closed session and I'll...
Okay.
Invite you to...
If you have any questions, I'll hang around here and...
Okay, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is Nick Van Kuss with Woodseth to discuss the 2020 road project.
Hi, I'm Nick Kuss with Woodseth. Just going to give you a quick update. We got the final numbers from Mindot for the 2020 project, so.
So they are the final numbers?
Larry said they were. Yes, Larry said that they were the final numbers, so we're, we're, we're processing those to get those split out into the, we just got them Monday, so we're going to get those split out and, and, and ready to go for the assessments, so. I know he mentioned maybe doing a work session to go through them once we got them processed, so we can do that. I hadn't heard back on, I did ask a question, the question to Mindot about the crossing down by the DQ, the pavement marking. They hadn't gotten back to me yet.
Casti.
So...
But thank you for looking into it.
Yeah, I mean, they'll get back to me. They just hadn't gotten back to me yet. Sometimes it helps to shake that tree and sometimes it doesn't, so, you know. But I'll send out a reminder email to see if they'll follow up, so. That's all I know about that. Otherwise, that's about all I have unless you have any other questions.
We don't have a date on the pavers and cement yet.
I've not heard anything on that.
But they're satisfied with the cost or what the council decided and everything?
I believe so, yes.
So that's included in the final numbers or whatever?
I hadn't gotten to that part yet. I believe they processed the change orders, so that locks the numbers in, yes.
Okay.
That's the easy part of that, I guess, or hard part, but it's, it's done, so. Yep.
Any other questions from the council?
As soon as we have it ready, I'll, we'll let you know, absolutely. Yep. Yep.
So when would you expect that we'd be able to have assessment hearings?
Well, for sure, it'll be, have the breakout done this week, so then whenever we can have the work session to go through it to maybe set that. I suppose the next, if we go council meeting wise, we'd have to send out announcements sooner rather than later to get the 30 days before the next council meeting, right? So it'll be...
It'll probably be in December at the earliest.
Yeah, probably.
Okay.
Yep.
All righty. Well, thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the Pope Douglas Solid Waste lease agreement. I hope the councils had a chance to look at the final version. I talked with our attorney, Mike Cass, today and he's discussed this with the attorney for Pope Douglas Solid Waste and they are in agreement that this final version is, is good with both parties and, so I would, and they're hoping to, to get some work done yet this year and as far as dirt work and getting ready to, for the recycling place of the environmental drop site, so. I would just ask the council if they have any questions on the lease agreement. It would be part of the city parcel that includes the transfer station and some property a little to the north of the transfer station, but it's just the south edge of the, of that parcel along Industrial Road. That's Industrial Road, yeah. Yes. Yes, yep. On the north side of the road and west side of, adjacent to the 130th Street, I believe, so.
That's good access.
What's that?
So that'll be good access?
Yeah. And they have access to utilities there and so forth, so.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the lease agreement that we have in front of us for the Pope Douglas Joint Solid Waste Management Transfer Station.
I'll second that.
Okay. So I have a motion by Councilman Gorder to move forward with approval of the lease agreement with Pope Douglas Solid Waste for the environmental drop site and seconded by Councilwoman Balko. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the police report. Chief Johnson is in, a meeting tonight, so he couldn't attend the council meeting. What was it, towards zero death agreement? Training that he had to have? So I don't know if there's any questions on the police report. There are 174 calls for service and, and you have the rest of the information in your packet. I don't know if there's anything, do you have questions on? Is that SWAT agreement? Is something we have to approve?
It is.
Is that in the new business?
Um, no, it's in...
Just in the police packet?
In the police packet.
Yeah, and I call, call your attention to the West Central SWAT team agreement. You know, we'll need a motion and second and vote to approve that. Yep.
It is, and it had, a new resolution had to be done because they added some new cities to the agreement, so.
Was that the only difference or just?
That and the cost went up $250 from $17.50 to $2,000 for the year.
I'll make a motion that we approve the West Central SWAT team agreement.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Gorder to approve the West Central SWAT team agreement, seconded by Councilwoman Hanson. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Is there anything else on the police report that, for discussion?
There is a new format. I know Mitch mentioned that usually he writes out a summary of what went on during the month and now it's being, so he just wanted you to take a look at it and see what you think.
This brownie tire quote, is that for the police vehicles or, no, it's a different?
No, that's coming up.
Have we taken possession of that used squad from?
We have.
Okay, good. I missed a couple of meetings.
Okay. If there's no other discussion, we'll move on to, next item on the agenda is water and sewer and Randy Peterson here to discuss that.
Hello. I see the first item on the agenda is the lean-to addition at the wastewater plant. It's what it is. It's on the north side of our filter building. We salvaged some steel from the roof of the wastewater plant, so I guess the lean-to was using that steel that we saved, so it would just be the lumber and labor more or less to put a lean-to, just so we got a place to store sanding trucks or tractors or plows or that kind of things to keep it out of the sun and the rain more or less. I apologize, I grabbed quotes, but the quotes I grabbed were for the roof of the wastewater plant and I didn't realize that until I got here, so I don't have the exact, the exact ones in front of me. Uh, the, the new filter building, it'd be on the north side of that. Right now, there's two small storage sheds. Like, if you go north of the fence where we have all the dirt piles. Yep, so it would be on the north side of that, kind of in that open area. No, it would be as long as the steel, so I think it was, the sheets are...
Forty-eight?
That's a 16 by 12?
16 feet out and it's the length of the building. The height is the 12 feet. So I, yes, yeah, I'm not exactly sure how long the building is, but it's from, there's a short fence that goes around our chemical tank, so it's from that short fence all the way to the end of the building, so it's probably 40 feet long, I would say, close to it.
The one bit says 48 feet.
Okay, yep, that's, and they were both the same. I told both of them that, you know, the, the length of the steel and from where the fence is to the west side of the building, so size-wise, everything should be the same height.
One says 14 foot lean-to onto the existing building and the other one says 16 feet.
Okay, I think it probably comes down to the pitch of the roof more than anything because the steel is there and I had just told them both to measure the steel and plan accordingly to what they can make work with the steel that we have, so. And I did talk to Keith. He said he could get to it this year as long as the weather didn't freeze up to get the holes in the ground for the posts and that and I did tell him that, you know, Mike has that frost bucket on the backhoe, even if the ground did freeze, we could get the frost out of there as far as getting poles and that set also and there is no super rush on it. I guess if, if it didn't get done till spring, that would be fine too, I guess. There's...
And who is that? Which estimate was that that you talked about?
For, this was Keith Kirkwald, but either one, I guess it, it wouldn't matter if it's this fall or next spring, I guess. I'm fine with either one. It would just be nice to have a little storage and we have the steel, so.
What do you think he could get done this year? Kirkwald?
He couldn't say one way or the other. He said as long as, you know, you can get the poles in and set before it freezes. You know, it could be a winter project if you got some nice weather when you could work on it, but, you know, nobody knows what the weather is going to be. It's kind of like our highway project when the second week of October, we had a foot of snow on the ground, you know, before it frees up, yep. So. I guess I would like to see a motion to approve.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the Kirkwald construction estimate for $9,250.
I'll second that. That's pretty reasonable.
Mary second. So I have a motion by Councilman Gorder to approve the construction of a lean-to at the city gridges by Kirkwald Construction for $9,250, seconded by Councilwoman Balko. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
All right, the next thing on the list is we need to order some more salt. I got a few quotes. A semi holds about 18 pallets. Really don't need 18 pallets, so I, I called Travis McCrory, who also does snow removal and that kind of thing, and kind of asked where he got his salt and if he was interested in maybe kind of like splitting a load with us. So he said he would take six pallets, so I would like to purchase 12 pallets and that way we'd get a full truckload and he would get some and we would get some. He has it set up so that he would get billed on his own, but we'd just get it all on one truckload. The price was $270 a pallet, so 12 pallets would cost about $3,234. And that was from Compass Mineral.
Okay. I would make a motion that we proceed with purchasing the salt at $269.50 a pallet and get 12 pallets.
I'll second.
Okay. So I have a motion by the mayor to proceed with purchasing the salt for this winter and for 260... for this winter and, uh, for two sixty-nine a pallet at, at, uh, twelve pallets, seconded by Councilman Gorder. Any questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Next item I have is, uh, we would like to build docks for the marina again this year. I thought we'd probably build the same amount as we did the last couple of years, just to kind of stay on pace with where we're at. We usually do about twenty-four docks. I'd like the approval to let Lowry, let Lowry Manufacturing know so that they can kind of get it in their schedule as far as building them again, um, and proceed with getting, uh, bids for the floats and the lumber. So that we can kind of keep everything rolling.
Do you know if there's gonna, how much of a price increase, if any, there is gonna be from Lowry here?
I do not. That's something we can talk to them, they usually give us a quote, kind of, before they start. We do twenty-four typically.
Do you remember what the total cost was on the last one?
It's ballpark about two thousand dollars per dock.
Okay. Do we have the funds in the marina? Do we take that out of the marina fund?
Yeah, well, we, they go actually to Ho Ho Park, they're replacing those docks first, so...
We can swing it?
Yeah.
And right now, we have about two years, this coming year and one more year, and then we'll have all of them on the campground side done to that, uh, north boat landing.
They seem to be working out okay.
Yeah, I, they look like they're holding up well and had a lot of compliments on them and I don't think, I don't think we've had a single complaint on anything about them that...
Well, the couple guys at the B, they want lights on. They said get solar, that's what I got, that's a good idea, so...
And there's people that do that. I know I pull poles out on the end that have the lawn lights duct taped on the end.
Tell them to get their checkbook out, Mary. Tell them to get their checkbook out.
Yeah, after we talked for a while, that's a good idea, so they're, they were gonna try it.
I guess I'd, I'd make a motion that we approve the, going forward with the process of, uh, getting the quotes and whatever to, uh, do the twenty-three docks as you...
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four docks as you proposed.
This is to get estimates, right? Or this is to be rolling?
Lowry Manufacturing, they kind of designed them in that, so, um, you can't really get estimates on the frames. But this is the estimates for the floats and the lumber.
Yep.
We should get a couple of different prices, which I'll bring back to you guys before we proceed with, but...
So let me rephrase that motion. I, I'll make a motion that we go forward with Lowry Manufacturing, um, putting together the frames and then you getting quotes on the lumber and the rest of the accessories.
Yep.
I'll second that.
Oh, we, we have a motion by Councilman Gorder to, uh, proceed with using, uh, Lowry Manufacturing to, uh, construct the frames for twenty-four more docks and, uh, to proceed with getting quotes for the lumber and materials to complete them, seconded by Councilwoman Hanson. Any further questions or discussion? So I guess, uh, the final decision would still rest with, uh, get, after getting the quotes, right?
And I will get a quote from Lowry Manufacturing also and I'll pr, bring it to the council, um, probably before we do officially move forward with it, but I just wanted to get the approval before I move ahead with it and find out that the money's not there to do it and waste a bunch of people's time, so...
Well, very, everybody's in agreement with that, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Also, we need some tires. Our sludge trailer tires are kind of getting down there. It gets a lot of road miles between us hauling sludge and, uh, the trade that we work out with the city of Benson. They're getting down there quite a ways right now, we're gonna be hauling sludge within any day here now. We have the tractor, just kind of waiting on a few results from the lab. But I have prices from, uh, Brownie's Tire. They gave me, uh, quotes on four different tires. I did call them and ask if there was much of a difference and they recommended going with the cheapest one, that they're all pretty similar in quality. So I guess I would like approval to purchase the, the Alliance tires. They're thirteen hundred and sixty dollars each. With the mounting and balancing charge and disposal and all that, it'd be about six thousand two hundred dollars for a set of four tires for our sludge trailer. And the idea is to hopefully get by this year with the ones that are on it, but I would like to order the new ones, just in case something doesn't go as planned and we have a new set of tires that can go on it. It sounded like it takes about a week or two, the way they kind of made it sound, once you order them, to get the tires.
So you're gonna take a chance and go with the old ones?
We do have, we have a spare for the trailer, one spare.
Is Brownie's the only one that have access to these type of tires or?
They're the only ones, I guess, I've, I've checked with, these are, they're big tires.
Big, okay.
They're egg tires.
And I, I looked at the tires and, yeah, we need to do something. We definitely do.
I say go ahead, man, did I make the motion? Please go ahead and get them.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman, uh, Faulkner to proceed with, uh, purchasing four tires, uh, from Brownie Tire Service and, uh, seconded by Councilman Gorder. Is there any fur, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
And we also need tires on, uh, Mike's truck, the plow slash dump truck. Mike did get a quote for tires when he was over there, actually getting one of them fixed. They were the only one that we have got a quote for so far and they're for, uh, Falcon Wild Peaks. The price of the quote is one thousand six hundred and five dollars and sixty cents for the six tires. I guess I'm not exactly sure if you want me to get a few more prices from different places before we approve it or if we want to just get them.
For six tires, that's cheap.
And I think they're pretty decent tires, I know... Yep, that's all mounted and balanced and all that. We will need an alignment on it also when we do it, but it, yeah. But it def, we definitely need it before we get snow because there's nothing left of them that's on there now.
I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, the purchase of six tires from Brownie's, um, totaling sixteen hundred and five dollars for, um, the plow truck.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion for Councilman Gorder to proceed with, uh, purchasing six tires, uh, for the, uh, dump truck plow, uh, and, uh, from Brownie's Tire Service, seconded by Councilman Gorder, or Councilwoman Faulkner. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
And the, the concrete that was broke up by Casey's during the 2020 project in the building of the store, um, there was some talk back and forth over who was gonna kind of ultimately be responsible for it. I did kind of get a phone number for some hire upset Casey's and we talked to them and they called me back and they ended up coming and looking at it and they ultimately decided that they would just take care of it themselves, so they hired their own contractors and, um, fixed the sidewalk for us and made everything great, so... Want to say thank you to Casey's, if anybody is listening out there, we really appreciate that.
Did you call how much that was bended out for?
Was it eight or nine thousand dollars, Nick, do you remember? I don't remember off the top of my head, but I thought it was somewhere right around there.
I think that's correct, it was eight or nine thousand.
And the Department of Transportation just said not our problem.
They worked with Casey's and the contractor and there was a lot of arguing back and forth and nobody wanted to pay for it and they ultimately pushed it back on us and said, "We tried our best, it's kind of on you guys." So I ended up getting a phone number off a liquor license, I think, or something and...
At the liquor store?
A city liquor license, so, um, I called that number and it got to the person it needed to, so...
That's great.
Don't drink that.
Because the city was, had intended to, to pay for that, right?
No, no.
It was still kind of undecided, but, uh, it got fixed anyway, so...
Thank you for that.
Yeah, thanks.
Getting that ball rolling.
We did have a, uh, effluent filter pump, it's a very big pump at the wastewater plant that kind of pumps all our effluent to the filters to finally, to get filtered before it goes to the river. Uh, we did have one go down, I think it was maybe a month ago now. We did have a spare sitting there. We put the spare in, got it wired up and everything going again, but I did call WW Getch, which is the company that we buy them from. Last time we had one go down, they came and they got it and they looked at it to see if there was, uh, fix to it and they did repair it and that's the, our spare that we had put in there now. So I called them and they, uh, one of the salesmen, uh, came and we loaded the pump up and they took it with them to kind of see if there is any fix to it. I haven't heard anything back, but I just wanted to give you a heads up that, um, we have an expensive pump getting looked at as far as if there's fix to it or not, or if we ultimately need to replace it, so... That's all I have on that. And I think that's kind of all I have.
How much have we had to buy a new one?
I don't even want to guess off the top of my head, but I want to say in the ten thousand-ish area. But don't quote me because I don't remember for sure and the prices on that has probably changed a lot since we last bought one, so... Hopefully it keeps working so we can get by till next year or something and look at it in that budget. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Randy. I don't believe we have anything for the fire department, uh, anything that you had, Joan?
Um, no, we'll just be working on the fund budgets going forward, so...
I don't think there's anything else, uh, except, uh, next item on the agenda is all business, uh, and that's to discuss the THC memo from city attorney and the attached draft ordinance and I assume that if we proceed with this, that we'd have to have a public hearing on, on the ordinance and so forth, so... I don't know if there's any questions or discussion from the council on, uh...
Um, no.
What was that?
Steve wasn't here when we talked about it before. He wondered if it was in relation to our employees.
No, this is an ordinance, um, that we want to put together for the sale of legalized THC.
Edible businesses and Thomas.
Yep. They legalize edibles and beverages, so we wanted to have something in place.
So, anyway, our city attorney has, uh, worked with several different cities on, uh, on ordinance and, uh, this is pretty much what, uh, they came up with, uh, for everybody, but tailored to, to Starbucks and, uh, um, the, uh, you know, there was a question on what a license would cost and, uh, I think that was, decided that we would, uh, charge about two thousand dollars, the same as a liquor license and so forth, so...
Yeah, they can only do it in brick and mortar on Main Street, so kind of put them in an area so they aren't spread out everywhere.
That was the other, uh, point, uh, was whether to restrict it to a certain zone and, and I think we were talking about the business district primarily, so...
I think he talked about highway business?
Okay, yeah, highway.
Highway business.
Highway's going, right.
Not, he didn't, not in the ordinance, no.
I don't think the legislation that was passed, uh, just left it up to the city, so... There'll probably be, might be some changes in the next legislative session, but, uh...
No one's requested it so far?
And, uh, we don't know of any, buddy's selling right now, I guess, so...
Right, and you just don't want them selling it out of their garages or cars or, you know, you kind of need some rules and regulations and, um...
I think so, um, Mitch said there's really, last council meeting Mitch mentioned there's really no way to enforce it, but it's something.
Yeah, with a license, at least there's rules.
And if there are violations, I think there's provisions to revoke the license and, uh...
I can make a motion to move on with a public hearing for the, um, THC product sales ordinances.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by, uh, Councilwoman Hanson to proceed with ho, having a public hearing on the, uh, THC product sales ordinance, uh, seconded by Council, uh, Councilman Gorder. Is there any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Uh, next item on the agenda is to approve a final quote of, uh, forty-three thousand nine eighty-six eighty-eight from ten forty-four on a new police squad.
I'll make a...
Oh, I was just gonna say, it came in a little higher than the original quote, so that's why it's here again.
Yeah, I think the original quote was for, uh, forty-three, uh, excuse me, forty-two something.
Something, not much different.
And this, but it didn't include the installation and, uh, you know, a few items like a spot lamp and, uh...
Is this the original, this forty-two seven fifty-four?
Yeah.
Eighty-eight and then, yeah, with the add-ons here?
Yeah, this, this was the add-ons, so...
I'll make a motion, we approve the, the purchase of, or price of the new squad for forty-three nine eighty-six eighty-eight, um, with the addition of, um, some items that were not included on the initial bid.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Gorder to, uh, approve the, uh, quote, uh, for the purchase of a new police squad, seconded by Councilwoman Hanson, um, to include, uh, the additional, uh, charges, uh, to bring it to forty-three thousand nine eighty-six eighty-eight. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Uh, next item on the agenda is to approve Resolution twenty-two twenty-two dash nineteen to approve a donation, uh, from Anawaska Marine towards striping the city parking lots and says parking lots or is it lot or lots?
It depends on what we stripe. Might go further than one.
Okay. I'd... That's Resolution twenty-two twenty-two dash nineteen.
I'll make a motion, we approve the donation of, uh, striping the parking lots, um, donation of fourteen, one thousand four hundred dollars from Anawaska Marine and I, and I'd like to thank Ted and Denise for that. donation of fourteen, one thousand four hundred dollars from Anawaska Marine and I'd, and I'd like to thank Ted and Denise for that.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilman Gorder to approve Resolution twenty-two-two dash nineteen, accepting a donation from Anawaska Marine of one thousand four hundred dollars towards striping of city parking lots, uh, seconded by Councilwoman Baukow. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Uh, next on the agenda is approve Resolution twenty-two-two dash twenty to accept a note, donation from Starbuck Men's Auxiliary towards the Heritage Days fireworks. Of two thousand dollars.
On the resolution itself to say it's not coming from Anawaska Marine.
I'll make a motion that we accept the donation from Starbuck Men's Auxiliary Resolution Number twenty-two-two dash twenty for two thousand dollars towards, uh, Heritage Day fireworks.
Do I have a second to that?
I can second that.
Okay. A motion by Councilman Gorder to approve Resolution twenty-two-two dash twenty, uh, accepting a donation, uh, from Starbuck Men's Auxiliary for two thousand dollars towards the Heritage Days fireworks, seconded by Councilwoman Hanson. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is to revise the language in Resolution twenty-two-two dash thirteen, approving the city or Cyrus Fire Relief selling full tabs and E-tabs at the tavern. And, uh, Joan, what was the reason for this change?
They, Minnesota Gambling Board had wanted the Cyrus Fire Department to just phrase it as lawful legal gambling, not being as specific as full tabs and E-tabs.
Say that again, Joanie.
They had, Minnesota Gambling Board had gotten back to the Cyrus Fire Department and asked if the language could be changed to just say lawful, whatever I have on here, lawful legal.
Lawful charitable gambling.
Yes, thank you. And not say specifically E-tabs and full tabs.
I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, Resolution Number twenty-two-two dash thirteen for the Cyrus Fire Department Relief Association, um, lawful charitable gambling at the tavern.
I'll second that, if Mary doesn't have any questions. You look like you have a question, don't? Does that make sense to you?
What does make sense to me?
If you have any questions, I don't wanna second until I have.
I'll second that then.
So we have a motion by Councilman Gorder to approve the revision, uh, to just state lawful charitable gambling at the tavern for the Cyrus Fire Department Relief Association, uh, seconded by, uh, Councilwoman Hanson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Uh, next item on the agenda is to approve Resolution twenty-two-two dash twenty-two to accept the donation from the Starbuck Men's Auxiliary towards a new airport garage of two thousand dollars.
I'll make the motion to accept the twenty-two-two dash twenty-two from the Men's Auxiliary for the new garage, airport.
Second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilwoman Baukow to approve Resolution twenty-two-two dash twenty, twenty-two-two dash twenty-two, approving the, accepting the donation from the Starbuck Men's Auxiliary for two thousand dollars towards a new airport garage, uh, seconded by Councilwoman Hanson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is, uh, to discuss an invoice from the Glacial Ridge growers for the additional hanging baskets we had in the city. These are ordered through the beautification committee and, uh, they were a short twenty-one hundred dollars and, uh, the Depot Society is donating a hundred dollars and paying Glacial Ridge growers directly. Uh, the Chamber has approved a grant, uh, of a thousand dollars and will pay that to Glacial Ridge growers directly. And the, and they also approved a two, a thousand dollars loan to the beautification committee, which they paid to Glacial Ridge growers. So the question before the council is whether the city, uh, would be willing to contribute a thousand dollars towards this shortage and, uh, that would be paid directly to the Chamber of Commerce, uh, who's already given the money to, to, uh, Glacial Ridge growers.
Well, I guess I'd be in favor of that thousand dollars to do, but then maybe next year they should not spend what they don't have.
Yeah, we're just talking about this here, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Do we have any idea why they were denied a BRING foundation application? I mean, so, you haven't heard?
Well, the, you know, I've, I'm not sure the exact reason why it was not granted, but they didn't get a BRING, which they normally do.
Right, I just wasn't sure, like, did they not submit or?
Yeah, no, they submitted.
They submitted, but they just got denied, huh?
Yeah.
Yes, it was.
Sorry.
I'll second the motion, uh, for the city to pay the, the one thousand dollars towards the, um, beautification committee.
Cause it's beautiful in the city.
For the flower baskets.
Maybe they can find, you know, someone with better prices.
Well, you know, what happened is the baskets that were purchased were the big ones, which hold about five gallons in reservoir and the, the weight was too much to hang from light poles or whatever, so, um, they just had to be distributed around the city and the beach and so forth, so. In the future, they probably wouldn't.
Downsized it a bit.
They downsized it a bit, I think, so, yeah, so. So we have a motion by Councilwoman Baukow to approve the, uh, a thousand dollars, uh, payment from the city to the Chamber of Commerce to, uh, pay off the balance of the loan to, to the beautification committee, uh, seconded by Council, Councilman Gorder. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. I think that concludes our agenda, uh, except for the closed meeting that, uh, we'll be having for personnel discussion and, the sale of the real estate, so. I will, uh, close the regular session of the council at seven forty-eight and, uh, we'll go into closed session in five minutes. So, we go in the office. Oh, so.
We'll have to leave. I mean.
I mean.
Are you, I don't know.
Are you officials?
Okay, alright. That's fine.
Yeah, let's do that. Let's go in the office, yeah.
Maybe when lumber prices go down.
That's I'm careful and the availability. I don't want to start and then have the availability. Oh, you can't finish.
My son who lives in Center City is quite lots of these sold. Two hundred going out and one is just sat for period of time now. And I'm sure they're waiting for, it looks like the siding is the next step.
I'm going to reconvene the regular session of the Starbuck City Council at eight sixteen. And the two items that we discussed, the personnel discussion is is being tabled until we get further information regarding that issue. The second issue is the sale of the real estate. And we have an offer from Ted Ruzink for that property, which is pretty much in the floodplain, as was explained. And so.
I'd like to make a motion that we, after negotiation with Minnewaska Marine, Ted Ruzink, the city would okay the sale of parcel, of the surveyed part of parcel twenty seven dash oh six one nine dash zero 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 for the amount of forty five thousand dollars. And that is to include an easement for the city for access if we need.
I'll second that.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilman Gorder to approve the sale of the surveyed portion of parcel twenty seven dash oh six one nine zero 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 to Ted Ruzink for a negotiated price of forty five thousand. And seconded by Councilwoman Hanson. Is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing not in all, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
I'd move that we adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned.